Thank you all for being here today. This is our workshop session right here. Since we have called it order, this is the opportunity for members of the public to suggest the addition of topics for discussion or to address topics of interest with the city council is here. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All speakers will please identify themselves at this podium up here with their name and address, and please keep everything civil at this time. See if there's anybody have comments. I don't have the sheet up here. Anybody has something to say? Donna? Let you go first if you're not on. I don't know. You're first.
One of the things that I wanted to address is the updates that we were used to getting, you know, during council meetings and from city manager. I just wanted to tell you how important they are, you know, as a residents to hear those because we have so many projects that have been going on for a while. And so I know my curiosity and I hate to go and call Dennis and say, hey, can I come in? Because any conversation with me is not going to last 10 minutes. It's going to be a long time. Don't want to take up all your time with that. So maybe just if we can continue doing that like we used to, kind of the brief updates, like the water storage project. You know, last I heard it was going to go on April of 2024, and then there was something with the electrical, and then I haven't heard anything. The progress of the master plan, that was adopted February 8th of 2022, and I know we've brought it up before. Oh, wow. Look at that. Hey, I just speak and it appears, right? And so anyway, that's been almost three years, be three years next month. So, and I know we got a draft and then kind of, you know, just wanted to follow through if councils had set up special meetings or what's going on with that. Of course, you know, my favorite topic, the audits. The audits, and I know we've done a great job in the council and city manager and mayor's been devoted to getting those done, and I really appreciate that. And it was two years ago that we had this firm, that we changed firms so that they could kind of get these out in a timely manner. And so that's been about two years ago. And then we had a great presentation on the roads a couple months ago, and that was so informative. And then it's like, okay, what's next? So anyway, if we could, if y'all, if the council agrees to kind of do the updates again, I would really enjoy hearing about what's going on with the project. And I think too, the problem is when people don't get updates, then they get all this speculation and misinformation, and that's where the unfriendliness, I guess, comes on, you know, in different sites and things like that. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know, that's still really important to a lot of us residents to hear the progress of each of those projects. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, come on.
I just want to add to Donna's updates. There was supposed to be a sidewalk sometime in the next, I don't know, 20 years or something to the high school. Supposedly there was a grant that was made available, but I haven't seen a sidewalk yet. People see me walking a lot. I would like a sidewalk on that road. So maybe you can give us an update on that too at one point when that sidewalk's going to come in. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Council, your turn. Who wants to start? We got some items here to discuss. We want to, you want to start it, Dennis?
Yes, sir. We have our building official, Mike Reeves here. He's going to talk about DS 25001. It's to discuss chapter four business regulations, and he's going to highlight some of that, and he's going to go into 25002. If you're, if you'll entertain that, right behind that, and that's to discuss the 2015 international property maintenance codes. He's both a building official and code enforcement officer, so he's got a pretty good understanding of what, where we're at and probably where we need to go. And tonight's basically just an overview, a quick one, give you all the documents. I think they're already out. Take them, look at them, we'll schedule. We got a lot of meetings coming up this, especially in the first half of the year. So I would expect a special session probably set aside. We've got one tentatively scheduled for the 29th, I believe, if everybody's in agreement to that. And so whether it's there or another one, we need to start moving some of this stuff through. We're getting a better understanding where everybody's at. So go, turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. Good evening, council. What I'm going to present tonight, one is going to be an idea for an STR ordinance. Short-term rentals are becoming very popular. I think everybody's stayed in an Airbnb, VRBO, things like that. My concern with those are most of the time they're not inspected. Before we have people come to our town and start using them, we're allowing them to stay in there, and we haven't even looked at them. So one, one thing in this, what this ordinance will do is allow me an opportunity to make sure, one, they have smoke detectors, there's egress from the structure to the public way, things like that, just safety related, has nothing to do with anything else for me. But the ordinance here will give everything through it, the penalties, the requirements, basically anything and everything you'd want to know about the ordinance. I didn't create it, but I did work on this one and just kind of tweaked it for us.
Taren mentioned something when this came up a while back, and he said that there was a checklist for Airbnbs or, you know, short-term rentals, and that there was a place there for a fire inspection. And so have you seen that checklist?
No.
Yeah, I think it exists.
The ordinance is pretty vague and it's real short on STRs.
You might know something about that. Yeah. Okay, and it, I don't know that it has everything you want.
Sure.
But I think it's, something is going on. I, okay.
Yeah, I might add, council, that this, all the ordinances need to be revisited, and all of them need to make sure, because we got all kinds of issues administratively speaking, trying to enforce them, interpretation and what have you. So this is just building, code enforcement and building official related that he's dealing with, but we're dealing with others as well. And they'll be coming to you with recommended changes in order to make it more clear for the citizens and for you all to understand how, you know, we're enforcing those rules and make sure that you adopt those changes to, again, it bring clarity, more effective building official duties and law enforcement and fire and what have you. So all of them are going to be touched, and some of them need to be done away with, some of them just need to be tweaked. But he's already been given that task, and that's what this process is all about to start down that road.
Yeah, I've been looking at the zoning ordinances and looking at, you know, adopting the ICC, which would cover a lot of questions that we have on some things in town.
A question about, just our side note about this ordinance. I've been into several different conferences where cities have been overrun by short-term rentals because they didn't have a limit of how many, and they have just kind of taken over the, you know, half the town is short-term rentals. And it was more like down by the coast and stuff, different people I've talked to. I'm wondering, I don't know the legal ramifications, but if we're rewriting this ordinance, should we consider a limit of how many we would allow in the city? Or, I don't know. I'm just was, I'm just, it was just a thought that I had because they were having quite an issue with their whole town had changed flavor because it was just all vacationers coming to the town.
This will contain a distance regulation between one and another.
Okay.
So, you know, it would have them spread out. They can't be in a concentrated area.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know legal. But if you're using it as commercial property, now, I know some short-term rentals, you, it's a requirement that people reside in the property, and then they can just lease out a room or something. But if you are literally turning your property into commercial, which I think in my mind, that's kind of what it is, it's not residential. Yeah, I see. Okay.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm on that, that side. When you say that the town is being overrun by that, I don't understand what that means.
Well, what they were saying is that some big developer came in and bought out half the, half the houses in the town, and they have somebody managing it for them, and they run them as short-term rentals.
And they've turned into frat parties, they've turned into wedding and bachelor parties. And so it's like, okay, this block is all.
Okay, you've got, your ordinances will take care of that.
That's just the same thing I've read. Yeah.
Yeah, but that doesn't. I was just saying, if we're looking at the ordinance, that would be something, I think it would be, you know, maybe good to be proactive rather than reactive, and I don't know what the ones are.
Well, it depends upon which side you're going to proactively take my rights away and tell me what I can and can't do.
The point I'm going to make is if, if I get a permit and you say that you can have only, you can't have one within every 500 feet, well then, in effect, you're saying my neighbor cannot exercise his constitutional right to use.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yep. That's a very slippery slope.
I know.
And we're sliding pretty damn fast, so let's, let's not encourage the sliding. This, this community was built.
It's just a question. And I've read the same type of things.
Well, I understand that, but you've got to have, okay, the question is asked, I'm the rebuttal to that question. I don't want any more regulation than it has to be for the good of the community, and I don't care what happened down on the coast, not here. I'm not going to start panicking every time somebody says sneeze.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the reaction that happens a lot of times, and it's a mindset. We need to prevent, we need to prevent, we need to prevent.
Just being aware.
And what we're doing is giving away all of our security.
Folks, whatever we do, it's got to be legal. So we can discuss this all we want, but I think we need to come up with the ordinance possibility. Have Neil, have Neil look at it, see if it's legal, and we can, then we can take it from there.
Absolutely. My intent was for y'all to take it, you know, see what you like about it, don't like about it. We could talk to legal, everything.
But let's know what we're talking about when we start talking.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but listen, I try to figure out a way to make it happen. Just because you can doesn't mean you have to.
Is there anything else you wanted to point out on this?
No, it's just basically for us to keep track with them, and, and so that we're enforcing codes evenly across there. Now, the regulation of one being closer, you know, a certain distance from another, that's based on other cities. It may not fit here, and that's why I submitted it to y'all so you can look over it and let me know what you like.
So I think our fee, our fee, like looking at the fees on here, our fee is actually more than $75 per resident. I think it's 500, isn't it?
I think, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Yeah. For the specific use permit. So I think all of us can, with a clear conscious look through this. Mike, we appreciate you taking the time. Putting it together, man.
Yeah, and like I said, my whole intent is I keep seeing these articles all the time. I'm in every code group you can think of on the internet, and I keep seeing STRs burning up people, catching on fire, and the people dying in them because they didn't have no smoke detectors, because they didn't have a way to get out of a bedroom because it passed through another bedroom. You know, so these are things that we have to make sure these people are safe here, regardless of finances or distance from anybody else. Every structure in this town should be safe.
I think there also is something that it has to go to planning and zoning, and then there's a public hearing. So neighbors get informed, and they get to participate again. So there is a little bit of neighborhood involvement on the front end.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Well, I think after watching California right now, guys, I think it's a pretty big eye-opener of how easy wildfires. And I mean, you know, people come to our community, shoot off fireworks, not realizing like, hey, you can't shoot fireworks off here.
Yeah, and there's also something about having the house rules. And that would be a part of the house rules, would be, you know, to make sure you're in compliance with city.
Or ordinances or.
Yeah, it's basically letting the people know you have liability insurance on the place, you know, it's posted like in the kitchen, the permit's posted, you know, that way when people come, they see that, and they know we've taken care of it and made it safe for them, you know, to stay in short term.
So Mike, the assumption is that, you know, if we move forward to something like this, then obviously we're going to have to backtrack and take a look at all those houses that are already registered?
Yeah, I think so. I think that would be the fair way to do it, and it's, you know, like I said, an inspection is not real intrusive, it's just making sure smoke detectors work, they're in the right locations, stairways are clear, doorways are clear, things like that, that's the whole.
And so we're just asking that council take this information back with you as well as the next presentation he's going to give, and review it, and have discussion and bring all those ideas forward. It's just because some things will be, obviously, there's going to be public hearings like that, but kind of have some general idea of what, what we're wanting to propose, what you all want to propose, so we can.
Neil, you'll look at it from a legal standpoint then. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
He's got one more.
Yes, sir. So the next presentation is for the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. It's what our ordinance covers with trash, debris, high grass, you know, unmaintained ground in the properties. We want to be able to help people maintain their structures as well. And it's, it's not, I know everybody thinks it's going to be heavy-handed, but I'm not. I want to come in and find solutions for folks, help them find charitable organizations if they can't afford to do this stuff. So it's not like this is coming in and going, oh, we're going to tell you to do all this on your property. It's just finding a solution. You know, I'm willing to work with folks and everything, but our, our, our housing ordinance is real vague on properties, and it doesn't allow us to address some things that we need to make sure that, you know, citizens are safe in their homes, and their homes are safe for their neighbors and everything else. The first page of it is basically just about the IPMC. Deals with maintenance standards on properties, light ventilation, heating, sanitation, fire safety, you know, so it just covers basically the health and safety of the structure and the property itself. Next page is the scope and administration. I'm just going to briefly go over the.
Good, thanks.
Yeah, you'll be able to read all of that. Now, we get our, I read the legal aspects of code administration through ICC, and that's where I get a lot of the legal that I deal with on this. Chapter two is definitions. It kind of defines some of these things a little bit, some ideas of what it actually is, if you don't know. General requirements. In general requirements, it allows me to deal with weatherization of structures, you know, whether they have broken window houses that really need some help because folks are living in multiple areas, and that's mostly the exterior property in the general requirements. Chapter four is light ventilation and occupants. It's, it's, we'll have to also look through the entire IPMC, which is a small book, it's only about 28 pages, but it, it just, it gives a lot of good meat and clarification to everything that we would deal with on a property. Chapter five, dealing with plumbing and fixture flushing out into the yard, and neighbors are calling and everything else. Seen it way too much. That's why I like to make sure that the installation and the work's done properly, and then we can make sure, you know, at least some of those things don't happen.
Isn't that a law that you have to get your health department?
I do. I'm almost positive.
It depends on what kind of septic it is.
Yeah. And we can have the amendments to whatever we need specifically, like in our ordinance.
But I think that helps.
Right. Chapter six deals with mechanical electrical requirements. I deal with a lot of electricians, and I've come across in the last 10 years, 60% of them don't know how to bond and ground appliances, equipment, pools. Let's see here, chapter seven.
Let me ask a question on that, too. Is, I'm sure we require permits for certain types of improvements on the property. Is that something that would be in here about permit requirements?
And all of that. And then, of course, what work requires permits is fully detailed in IRC. It's 102.5, and it tells you everything that's exempt from, then I will need a permit. So it just, it clears it up for everyone.
That's on the city website?
Mm-hmm.
In what area?
Uh, where's it?
Oakdale?
Not there.
I don't know.
I, I think she's got it in a certain spot. Did you get that?
Yeah.
Put on there? Okay, for code enforcement?
That's good to know. Okay, thanks.
No problem. Chapter seven, of course, is fire safety requirements. It deals with smoke detectors, fire extinguishers. It also, you know, they, they have to be able to get out of their house in case there's a fire. But, you know, in the past, I've come across buildings that are existing and had to go do an inspection, and they have bars on the bedroom window. Part of the inspection has to have them remove them bars, so that way a firefighter can get inside that room if it's on fire. So, yeah. I know anything open. So it's got to be fully by hand, being able to be open.
Yeah, one of the things, some of these houses were built, I don't know, in the 60s, 70s, and they had those, I don't know what you call them, but very narrow windows, like 18 inches. So I know we have some of that in the city. I don't know if that's big enough to ingress and ingress from.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, like on an STR or something like that.
Depends on, yeah.
If we're looking at STRs, most of them are on new homes, and they meet regulations on windows, things like that.
But on existing.
Yeah, existing structures. Now, if they were to want to, say, lease it out or rent it out for an STR or something like that, I would probably require them to change that window out to make it, you Chapter eight's reference standards. We'll come across to where there's certain reference standards, like for pool alarms on the windows and doors, there's a certain standard for that. You'll have standards for second floor windows that are below 24 inches to the floor, and that will, that will clear up a lot of that and give them the information they need as builders, homeowner, to get the correct equipment for, for the use. And that's it.
Thank you, Mike.
I supposed to be behind it?
Well, the, the IPMC should be given to y'all so you can review it and go over it and, and make sure that there's not anything that needs to be amended for the city.
Right. Right now, if you're just, we're putting you on notice, this is what's going to happen. Mike, we'll work with NIDA to get it out to you all, but we want to give you a heads, a head up, heads up basically what's happening on our end, so you're not off guard, you know what to, to their satisfactions, being able to look at it. And once we are, we'll set the meeting up. Like I said, we're going to be busy this year, so we'll just schedule it whenever you're all ready. It's your all's meeting.
And I'm willing to talk with y'all or meet with y'all whenever you need, and we can discuss aspects of it and detail it as we go.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you.
Glad you're here. Welcome again.
Thank you.
All right, I go.
And Dennis, you want to take it from there?
Yes, Mayor, we've got, Camille asked her to come up and give you all basically an update where we're at, her plan of action moving forward, and answer any questions you might have at this point in time. Camille?
Yes. Camille, there's just a few dates that I want to point out. Of course, there's more information on our website or at the Bell County website in reference to this particular election. Tomorrow, January 15th, is the first day that residents can come in and pick up the packets to apply to be on the, to run for council. That's going to go from January 15th until January 14th. That last day, I'm sorry. I'm still staring at the word January. February 14th. And on that last day of February 14th, the office will be open until 5:00 PM, just for pickup of packets, nothing else, no pay. February 20th is when we're going to do the drawings for who places on the ballot. April 21st to April 29th is going to be our early voting period. The times will be posted on the website, those times posted, and then, of course, the next day, the next date will be May 3rd for the election day. So if you know somebody, know somebody, know somebody that wants to be on council, have them come in.
I would hope somebody, one of the organizations would sponsor a meeting for the candidates so we could have a debate or, maybe not debate.
Or the Bell County Elections Office website.
Thank you, ma'am. Dennis, you want to?
Yes, Mayor. During the holidays, I had some time, some free time. I thank you all for that, and I'm sure every staff employee would say the same thing. I think it was a good time of year, it's time to refocus, and we got 30 minutes yet, so I'll try to be done in less than 20. But there's a lot going on and some things you may or may not be aware of. I know we talked about this stuff at one time or another, but it's, it's not a bad thing to remind people. But before I start on my city manager updates, doing from her desk to see if we can get through these challenging times, it's going from Fund View, from InCode to Fund Use Financial Software, which doesn't matter how we got here, we're here. So our job is to work through these issues the best we can. We will evaluate our software annually, just like other programs and services internally, to ensure this is what we need to do moving forward. But that said, there's a fiscal impact to all that, and we need to be mindful of our limitations and as trying to be a good steward.
Pretty much know me. Okay, Teresa, the Admin Services Director. I put out a statement yesterday on our city website, our Facebook page, and what's the other one? Newsflash. And I'm going to kind of go over what was put out. Like Dennis said, I understand the frustrations of this whole system. We're not going to, we're going to extend, I'm not going to say we're not going to charge late fees, we're going to extend the due date to the 21st. It'd be considered late on the 22nd of January. So that gives you a little more extra time because I understand everybody either got their bill on the 9th, the 10th, the 11th, and today, or yesterday. So we want to give you a little bit more time while we figure out the actual system. I mean, it's gotten better because when we first sent out the bills, you guys didn't get it until after cutoff date. And then last month, you guys got it late notice date. So it's moving back, and I'm hoping that come next month, it will be back to normal, where you receive it at least by the first week of the month. We do have a third-party company that we do have to bill out of, or they have to print our bills and mail them because I do still generate the charges. I just can't print the bills like I used to and mail them out. That's how we're getting them so quickly because we were doing it in-house. With Fund View, it was required in the contract that we use, UCO. It's USIO, it's company that is housed out of San Antonio. I'll tell you the process of that, just so you kind of get an idea of how that goes. Once I generate charges, I'll send a file to them. As long as I get it, like this last time, we got it, I got it sent to them by 8:50 in the morning on the 2nd. By 9:30, they were sending me an email back asking me to approve the look of the bill. Once I approved that, they sent me another email stating, and this was probably about 10, stating that my work order was in process to get these bills out. From Fund View, talking with the people I'm in contact with, with Fund View, because I've asked multiple times just to make sure I understood how this was going to go, as long as I get those bills generated before noon, they should go out by 4 o'clock the same day. I'm not sure if they, they should have gone out by 4 o'clock on the 2nd. It could have possibly been pushed out till the 3rd just because of the holiday. It's not normal for me to not bill in the same month that I generate charges. So it kind of messed up, you know, obviously it messed up a little. So I'm hoping come next month, we've gotten more of these bugs out and we get it back to the right process as far as getting them out on time. In the meantime, though, you can sign up for or register, I should say, your account online. Just because you register your account online does not mean you have to make a payment. You can just register your account so you can see what your bill is. You can also request, if you want to call us, for us to put you on paperless billing, or if you want both, if you still want paper but you want to get your bill in a timely manner, sign up for email. Once I generate charges, if you're signed up for email, you will automatically get that bill. You will get an email that same day stating and showing what your bill is. I think, Roxanne, you received that, correct? You do the?
I have in the past, but currently I'm not.
It didn't do that? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't re-register yet.
Okay. So yes, if, if everyone can register, I know some people are, you know, um, don't like to get online or just isn't, um, computer savvy. Um, we're, we're trying our best, uh, to make sure that we get you guys the bills on time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I think our, some of our residents are eligible.
Mm-hmm.
Um, can we register them ourselves? So that whether you register or not, you can get out there on the website and see your bill. So you honestly don't have to do anything and your bill will be out there.
Correct.
Is that, is there any violation of something like that?
As long as they're asking for assistance, I saw what you're saying. Are you kinda doing without their knowledge?
No, they're not asking.
They're, well.
We just automatically put everybody bill so that they can access it on the website and they don't have to do anything.
What kind of information's on that? Sorry, go ahead.
So they have to do it.
I think currently, I went last time, 'cause my bill had, didn't come in the mail as soon as I thought and I just went and put my account number in and it showed me my bill.
Me too.
Without registering.
What, what we're trying to do is, is those who didn't sign up when the software was changed over, so that we're trying to identify all those under InCode. We're identifying all those that we have under Fund View. We're finding that delta of names that we didn't capture or that didn't do it for one reason or another. Um, and we're going back and see if we can get that, that closed. Now, can't force them to do it, uh, that's their prerogative, but if we can get that and we'll have a good name, a list to work from, from that point forward. So eventually it will get smoothed out, I think, but.
My concern is, you know, I'm, I love social media and I think it serves a great purpose and our city website also can serve a great purpose to certain people. But is there anything we can put on the bill? Is there anything that we can do that won't require them to go search for something or register for something? They're just gonna get a bill just all day, always gonna be.
The, the notices all went out. I mean, you can give the litany of things that ever, from the water bill and the letters to their residents, to everybody's residents, I believe, we sent to every resident. So, uh, to social media, to website, uh, I mean, we've done it, the gamut. This is the ones that chose not to or didn't remember or there's, there could be a litany of reasons why they didn't. What we're trying to do is get that captured and go out, not go after them in a bad sense, but try to help them, get them where they need to be, yeah. And, and I might add, those who didn't, I've asked Camille to make sure that they, we capture those late fees uh, or any kind of disconnect fees, if you will, and capture that and re-credit that back. Because that's, again, messaging is everything. We don't know, people around here could travel and come back and say, you know, I didn't realize I was supposed to do it. So we're trying to basically get them where they need to be. Anything that would, would've been a fine as a result of that. Now, if they're chronically late, they were signed up, that's a different story. But those where there's that delta we're trying to close, if we can establish it, then we're okay getting that credit back to them so they didn't lose anything in the process. We just need to get them where they belong. Um, that's our approach.
Yeah, so anybody who was charged a late fee last month, but in the old system was signed up for auto pay, where myself and Amanda are in the process of working through those and then I'll remove all the late fees and then we'll send out emails to let them know that, hey, I removed it. If you still wanna be signed up, you have to go to our portal or our online system to get registered again. Let's see, I think that's pretty much it unless y'all have questions.
Just to highlight the fact that the bills are didn't generated from San Antonio. We had the holidays and that was no doubt a delay, I'm sure, but it doesn't matter. Like I said, we're in the position we're in, so hopefully, and this, how long it take you? Same day you got it out, that list that you got notified? Uh, you verified it and sent it right back out? So I don't think it's on our end, but it doesn't matter. We still have to work through these issues and get them on track. So we're, we're continuing to work that angle.
Yes, 'cause I.
We've recognized there's a problem, you're, you're addressing it and hopefully we will get it resolved.
Be patient, please.
Catrice.
Yes.
It's gonna be better once it's, it's gonna be an easier system, once it's, the kinks are worked out, right?
Yes, this is just taking a little longer than when we converted to InCode, but we're getting there.
You'll get there.
I know it's not on you guys' time, but we're getting there.
You'll get there.
Any other questions? Nope, we're good? Okay.
Thank you, Catrice.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so hang on your hats, drink your, get a fresh drink of water 'cause there's quite a bit we're gonna be talking about. Um, council joint meeting with P and Z, Camille's working on getting that set up for the twenty-third. Uh, Linda is here, so we'll, we're gonna work with her. I think that we've already reached out, but we need to get one of those set up as well for EDC and council. I would recommend you do that at least at the first of the year, preferably at least once every six months moving forward to where there's, there's no disconnect. Because that's really, it's all about communication, I think, in that regard. Uh, the next thing is audits. Uh, Carrie's loading up the documents, getting ready for the auditor. Because this is the busiest season for audits, uh, your fiscal year twenty-three audit will start till March. Well, the end of March, twenty-fourth's due. Um, right now it's, uh, during that audit period, if you will. So that's, that's an issue. Long story short is, um, because those who already had contracts, letter of engagements, if you will, they're working those now and, um, so these are previous audits. So we're not gonna take priority over someone, nor would I want that if I were a city somewhere else saying, well, I'm on hold because you're taking care of somebody that didn't do theirs. So they have to manage that time and what have you. But it is, it is, uh, something that's in the works. That's the good news.
That's the twenty-two, twenty-three audit.
Fiscal year, yeah, I just used last year's, what I'm using is fiscal year twenty-three, right? But I need to add to that is because in twenty-twenty-three, and we verify this information now, we spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the ground storage tank, number two. When we did that, we trigger a single audit requirement by the federal government. We have collected the documents, we have filled out the CIFA form, which is required, Schedule of Expenditures for Federal Awards. And we've got, we're getting the contracts and the pay apps that was used. All that's gonna be, um, scanned in. We'll end up loading that file up. I'm gonna need another engagement, uh, letter, audit engagement letter, so I'll be bringing that up. It's nowhere near the expense of a normal audit. You're probably looking, I'm guessing, for a city this size, probably five to seven, seven hundred and fifty, uh, yeah, seventy-five hundred, in that range. It may be less. There's only one, that's the only thing that triggered it, so it's not gonna take them long to do it. But it is something that's required by law, we don't have a choice. But the good news is we caught it and they're just now doing the fi- fiscal year twenty-three. So that single audit, they need those financial statements in order to do the single audit. So it's gonna work out okay, I think, in that sense. But I wanna let you know, there's one more audit in that mix. Fiscal year, uh, twenty-four audit will be due thirty-first, like I said, of March. Uh, the fiscal year twenty-four closeout is not completed yet. Uh, we'll need another audit engagement letter for that one as well. And in all this process, this, once this is all done, my recommendation to council is shift over to another auditor. There's plenty of them out there. You've had, this will be the fifth year or fourth year? Fourth or fifth? Let's, let's, let's get a, my recommendation is to move away to a different auditing firm once it's caught up and, but the auditing firm won't take any new business until they have the previous year's close, uh, audit. So we're at that transition spot. We'll, I would recommend, we'll go ahead and continue with the twenty-four audit with the same company and then move into the, for the, do an RFQ for a new auditing firm. The fiscal year closeout, uh, that is something that's been talked about. I don't want guessing anymore, I'm done with that. I'm, I'm surprised that we've carried this on as far as we have. I want fi- financial information. And if anybody doesn't like, well, well, truth be told is, is there's, there's a, so many variables of why we're at today, that there's no one way to pin it down. But these financials have to be done. We can't function without them. They're gonna be unaudited when they are done, 'cause we have to, after we get your financials, we gotta turn around and have them audited. And then this single audit, excuse me, a, uh, independent audit, so now that's the official version and that's what we can work with. But even just to look for money, I could, I could even sell the fact that we are looking for loans with our unaudited financial reports if they were up to date. They're not, they will be, got that. But, um, honestly, I'm to the point that we just, we're just gonna have to just keep hammering at that nail till it goes in the wood. Uh, the next thing is, is FEMA.
Is there anything that council can do? Is there any?
No.
Volunteer help? Is there any?
No, and I'll. No, and I'll tell you why. Because if feeding the, feeding them is not the problem and it's not just that. It's everything from software to the, the, the fact there was no, when you, when you switch financial software, we're talking about the problems we're having today. Every time we've ever switched software in my career, we always did it and it was called an investment assessment, assessment. Is this, what's kinda impact enterprise-wide, not just for finance, but also for HR, for, uh, IT, the whole nine yards? And that investment assessment tells you whether it's the right thing to do or not. I don't blame anybody here for not knowing that. But I came in a different world, so I came up in a different world. So, and I don't know everything about it. But I will say that without investment assessment, this is what you get. And that, that's why you, you spend so much time on the front end to make sure that stuff's done right. Again, I don't blame anybody, they all had their reasons for what they did, but it doesn't really matter. We're here, so we gotta deal with it and that's why, um, but no, the answer to your question, I don't want, we, we don't want to feed, we want them to learn the job. That's why we're spending extra money, the staff could tell you. I tell them I don't care what it costs, get the Fund View, get them in there and get them trained 'cause I want them to know. And I want it multiple layers, 'cause we work with such a small crew that if they don't know and I'm gone for three days and I'm, I don't count, or say two weeks, get sick in the hospital, whatever, for a month, accounts payable still has to be done. You still have all the related functions that has to occur. Well, if you don't know what you're doing, 'cause you're the only one, that creates problems. So we can't have that. So we are, we are spending, so that strategic adjustment I told you all about back when we did the budget, this is what I meant. There's gonna be things that, well, I didn't know this, but with this particular issue is gonna, I'm shifting things around. Stay within our cap, but that's a good example where we gotta put it where it's gonna have the most impact. And if you can't keep your financials in, in straight, every year we should be able to do a closeout and say, this is where we're at. Bring it to you. We should be able to bring quarterly investment reports to you. We can't. Those are kinda things, not a reliable way, I'll put it, I can bring something to you. Honestly, though, if I can't swear to it, why would I, why would I give it to you? So, but that said, you all will have to decide what's tolerable, what's not. Take the action you're gonna do. I'm telling you where the path I'm going down. Just try to get you where I think you wanna go. And that's where I'm at, okay? The next thing is FEMA.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, it's all right, it's what I'm here for.
We're all in this together, so.
Yeah, staff has actually been working, uh, when I first got here, I'll be honest with you, I didn't, I didn't hear the things I hear now. There's a lot of hands on the deck trying to think, get things right. I'm proud of them, uh, they do care, no one jumped ship. I'm actually very happy that, that they're really trying to get us where we need to be. Uh, Catrice, Nida's on board. You all know her role, but she's doing other things in addition to what, what you're commonly seeing. Mike, uh, there's, all these guys are trying to get us where we need to be. It's not gonna happen because of previous decisions that were made, good intentions or not. Uh, we're in Groundhog Day and I joke about that in a sarcastic way. But honestly, I feel like we're just, we're still living in the past, we're still living in the past. There'll be a time when there's a break even and we go into the future. But we're trying to take us in the future nonetheless. And it just takes time. Uh, it's not something, but I think to give it the council the reassurance, we have a good, we have staff that are really trying to get, and working hard to make it, make it work. Excuse me, uh, FEMA, we are still waiting for Serus to give us a, that's the people that picked up, the company that picked up the vegetative debris on the side of the road. They have not given us the last, uh, invoice. We are, uh, we did get involved and we talked to Waste Management. They're saying that they were gonna give them credit for that overcharge that they gave us, uh, they gave us in the county. So the county's in the same boat we're in. That's gonna get resolved. It's the tipping fees, right. They were told thirty-two, forty-one, I think is what number they charged, some other number. It doesn't matter, it was higher. It's about a, I don't know, thirty, forty, forty thousand dollar delta for us, uh, difference, something like that. Either way, we're trying to get that resolved, the county needs it done too. They're in the same boat. We got involved, Waste Management says, yes, we're gonna do it. I need to wait for that, uh, invoice to hit, the monthly invoice hit, uh, Serus. When they get it, this thing should get resolved. If not, we talked today, Carrie talked to FEMA and they said you can always get that estimate. Well, we'll estimate what we were quoted and just move forward from that.
Oh, good.
But we're gonna wait and see what, if we can get the actual invoice. Intergovernmental roadway program, the roads, we have six hundred thousand dollars set aside in the fiscal year budget this year to deal with roads. Granted, it's needed. Yes, we could spend the money and do an RFP, which is traditionally what you would do and just move on. Bigger cities do that because they have economies of scale. They have a lot more people paying for those roadways and they can, they can come up with a way to do some of that. We, on the other hand, won't get very far. We can do some of the dress up, uh, keep it from getting worse a little bit, but you're not gonna make much headway over the next ten years. We can go that route. Or we can do what I call the intergovernmental roadway program. I call it IRP for short. Uh, we're meeting with the, uh, the COG was gracious enough to host and they agreed to, to come up with a draft agreement that you all could look at if we can come up to an agreement from the city manager standpoint that it's feasible. They know their budget's better than anybody else. They'll know whether they have the money to do it or not, whether it's approachable to the council. If they agree that they, this is a way forward, then you can have a, about a seven-city share of equipment, personnel, or resources that would actually get a lot further than we'll ever do on our own. And based off your, your percentage of, of, uh, contribution is how long during that building, the roadway repair and maintenance timeframe that you would be able to use it. So if I had fifty percent or say I donated as a city, uh, mortgage point, let's say they donated, uh, twenty percent. Well, twenty percent of that counter, that's, that's days that we'll be able to use them on the road for what we're doing. Another city gives thirty percent, well, they get thirty percent and et cetera. It, it all works out if you see it. But first, let's find out if they're even interested. If they're not interested, then we've got two options. One is work with, uh, perhaps larger cities. Uh, I'm thinking the county, if you all agree to that. And I haven't approached them on this, they'll probably watch it and saying, well, thanks a lot for telling me. But I, what I would, yeah, yeah. So, um, but you can always, uh, perhaps contract them out directly at a reduced cost because they need, uh, they need funding for the roads and bridges and stuff. They're, they're underfunded as well. So it's a way they can pick up some extra money, it won't take them as long and maybe that's Plan B. And again, the decision's gonna be your all's, not mine. And the last resort is to just do an RFP, request for proposal, bid it out and get them to do the work. But that's gonna be the most expensive and we're trying to find a way to get some sustainability long-term to get you where you wanna go as a city, okay?
Is there a combo, I'm sorry?
I was gonna say, real quick, do we have a, an estimated time on when, um, the IGRP process is gonna go through?
The RFP is, if they agree, it won't take long to get the, the biggest thing is sitting down around the table with those who wanna do it. Make sure everybody can agree on the, uh, basically the nuts and bolts of the program 'cause everybody's had to have skin in the game. Uh, and it's not cheap, but it's not as expensive. 'Cause we're, just hypothetically, if you had, uh, seven cities and they all chipped in, let's say four hundred thousand, just giving you that a number, uh, or not say that, let's say we did it on a cheaper, let's say we did it three hundred thousand a piece. That's still, you know, over two million dollars we're gonna have to deal with this program. And that, that goes a long way, even used equipment. We won't buy new, 'cause you can spend a million dollars on a piece of equipment, but you could still go ahead and get something like that moving.
And we start, um, working in the background on a, the, the second and third order?
We, I've already talked to, I've already talked to the county. I didn't go into details 'cause about would I want them to do it? Because we talked about some things that we maybe get our materials at cost. So there's discussions, but not to the point of that. I, I'll know next Friday, a week from this Friday, whether it's gonna go or not. I guess we're not gonna, I can come back after the meeting and do the rest of it, if it's okay with you? Okay?
Okay. It's, uh, it's, it's seven minutes till, I'm gonna, as to we adjourn. We're, we're gonna reconvene in about seven minutes, uh, council meeting, so do I hear a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor?